We have, Kathy Ball, our interim city manager, through the rest of this week, is going to make-
Don't look so happy.
-is going to make our presentation today.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, thank you for the opportunity today to come before you and discuss the status of the City of Asheville's revenue sources, and particularly to open up a conversation with the community about those revenue sources. So we're kind of titling this "A Balancing Act" that hopefully will make sense as we move through the presentation. We all know how great Asheville is, whether you're a resident of Asheville, whether you're a visitor, whether you work here and travel from outside the city limits. We know, even in this year, we have received several accolades, including our favorite foodies of the city. Travel and Leisure has ranked us the top 15 cities in the United States. We have been rated the top vacation destination by Expedia this year. Now we are becoming even more well-known for our music industry, and even Forbes designated us as the top destinations of 2018. So as a result of that, we have seen a construction boom. With the economy and all of the things going on in our community, it only takes looking outside to see a crane in the air and a lot of movement happening in Asheville. We see there are examples of different pictures of our community growing and the opportunities that our community has as a result of that growth. So the question then becomes, as we look around our community, and a lot of times I'm going to be referring to the larger C of our community as the community as a whole, and the smaller one being city government. So when you look around the community and you see all the growth that's happening and everything good about Asheville, sometimes people don't necessarily connect the fact that with all that growth and all of the money coming into the community, not all of that money hits the City of Asheville's budget revenues. You've seen this kind of graphic in a different way before. The city basically has four different types of revenue that comes into the city, with the largest portion of that revenue being property taxes. So that means whether you're a business owner or you're a resident, that you pay property taxes on the property that you have. That includes real estate, property, it also includes cars, any other equipment that you have. We also have sales tax that comes, that's collected by businesses, sent to the state, redistributed to the county, and then comes back to the City of Asheville. We have charges for service. Those charges for service include things like our solid waste fee, or things like the, our permit fees and development services. We also have other revenues. Those other revenues would be things like franchise fees, utility fees that are collected by the state and redistributed back to the city, but they're based on, for example, with utility, all of us pay, that live in the city, we pay utility bill, as well as businesses. A part of that money comes back to the city in this way. Of those revenues, City Council really only has the ability to affect two of those different sources of revenues. And the first is property tax, and the other is charges for services. So we are talking about the best of times, from an economic standpoint. During the best of times, the growth that you see every year, when we talk about revenues, is around a 3% growth in our property taxes. The increase in 3% means that we will have an increase-
In our property tax collections.
Property tax collections.
Sorry.
Means that we would realize an increase of about $2 million a year out of $124 million budget. Sales tax increases, again, that's 5% growth. Those are very good numbers. That means that Asheville is doing a lot of business, and there's a lot of money coming into the city. The revenue the city receives from that is about 1 point, increase per year, is about 1.3 million. The increases in charges for services, those are things that we come to you with during the budget cycle, and we say to you, "We want to increase permit fees here," or "We want to increase a fee here." Those are typically where you see those increases come from. We really cannot count on any other increases coming in through those other charges. I do want to spend a little bit of time talking about sales taxes, because I think there are some myths around sales taxes that come to the city. I show this graphic, and I show it in a couple different ways. The best way that I can describe this graphic is that we know that for every dollar that's spent in the city, that they, the state collects seven cents of sales tax. So of seven cents of sales tax, .4 cents of that seven cents comes back to the city. So I'm going to say that one more time, like, seven cents is collected for every dollar, .4 cents of that comes back to the City of Asheville to hit the city. So when we talk about an economic spending number, what the city receives in the city's funds is much smaller amount. So for every million dollars in sales that occurs in Buncombe County, the city would receive $4,000 of revenue. So in a typical year, we would see just a normal growth within the city's budget of about 3.2 million. And if you remember in the slide before that I showed, we have a normal growth of about 3.6 million. So if you factor in generally four different increases that we see in our budget every year, the cost of living being 2 million, and those cover things like just employee raises, covering the cost for additional employee cost, healthcare .5 million, inflation .4 million, and then the increase in cost in construction that you heard about at your last budget work session, we're really at 3.2 million. So we don't want to paint the picture too drab, because we do, we are showing that that leaves us with about $400,000. But when you're talking about $400,000 to meet community expectations in this community, it really doesn't get us very far.
Kathy, that's assuming no new projects and nothing new is added to the budget. That is a base budget, right?
That is a base budget. That's no growth, except for the four items that we're talking about. So that's not even including enough to keep up with deferred maintenance. And when we talk about deferred maintenance, to be clear, and we've shown you this slide a number of times, we keep up with how well we're doing in maintaining our streets through a pavement index condition, and every community, larger community in North Carolina uses the same standard, and, you know, I guess we could be in worse place to Greensboro, but as you can see, it's like, it's like scoring a 58 or 60 out of 100 on a test. So you can see that we are not faring well when it comes to other communities of our size, when it comes to taking care of streets. Now, I will say that Council recognized this and took significant action in your, by working hard with the community to issue a bond to increase that amount, and we have done better within the past year or so, within that amount. To put that in context, it cost, about 10, to resurface 10 miles, cost about 4.25 million. The city has 400 miles of streets. At this rate, it would take us 40 years to resurface every street. And that is much better than we used to be, the condition that we used to be in. Excluding the bond money that we have, the city is currently spending in our capital improvement program about 2.8 million in street resurfacing. So let's talk for just a minute in transitioning, what options Council had or have at this point. So typically, when Council would look at this situation and hear of our limited revenues and increased costs, the limitation that we showed before was either increased property taxes, or to increase fees and charges. And that has been pretty much the limitation that Council has been facing at this point so far. And in looking at that, some of those, every year we come to you and we've looked at different ways that we could bring in revenue, an example of one is that, a couple years ago, the General Assembly allowed us to generate, to collect an additional vehicle tax, in the amount of 20 additional dollars for a total of $30, that had to be spent on roadway work, which gave us an additional $800,000. So the city is, the city's staff is currently always looking at options of increasing revenue sources for the city. And I know this is lengthy, so please interrupt me if you have questions during this. So what we're proposing today is a better way forward. We call it "A Balancing Act," because the balance is between the user of a service and who pays for the service. You've seen this slide before. We also presented this slide when we went out to the community and talked to the community about some of the challenges we're facing. The two slides, there is a gray line beneath, beneath the zero bar. Those are for folks who live in the city and travel outside the city every day for employment. The two gray bars are either, the darker gray is for people who are either retired or do not work, live in the city but don't really travel for their work purposes. The lighter gray are people who live in the city and they travel inside the city limits for their work. The green color, I'm going to make sure it's the same on this slide, the greenish color are people who live either within the county or within surrounding counties, and they travel in every day into the City of Asheville. And they may be traveling to go to the hospital, for doctor's appointments, to work, we don't know exclusively for the purpose that they're traveling. The lighter green is our tourist population that travel into the city on a daily basis. I want to toggle between these two, because I think there's an important point to be made between these two graphs. We have the largest increase in daytime population than any other large city in North Carolina. I want to go back, because I think I also want to make a point. The information that you saw showing that we have a 50% increase in population excludes tourism. So when you look at adding in tourism, what you're seeing there is that we actually about double our population during the day when you include tourism. So we go from around 90,000 to 160,000 during the day. So we have, we are, we are serving during the day about double the city's population with the services that the city provides. That is neither, that is not, not good or bad, it is simply the fact that we are the largest city within an hour from here, and we're a regional hub that provides services and is a job center for the surrounding area, and that we are an incredible place for people to visit. So none of this is a negative sense, it's just the, it's just the facts of the situation that we're dealing with. So who uses the city's services?
Kathy, let me, sorry, I just want to make the point on the tourism number, that of course that's not a, you know, the tourism is a seasonal, is still to some degree a seasonal thing here, so it's not like, it's not like we have the same, it's not like the commuters, where the, the number is regular every day. There are, there are days when we probably more than double in population, and then there are days that we don't.
Yes, that is an excellent point. We did take, for, for this slide, we did take that information from the Tourism Development Authority's website as an average day.
As an average across the year.
That's exactly right.
That's right.
So who uses Asheville City Services? So on, on one side of a balance, or of a seesaw, you see there's a non-resident population. So this non-resident population is made up of tourists and/or people who visit the city on a regular basis. And I would point out that, you know, the reason that a lot of folks, you've heard the numbers before about the number of city employees who do not live in the city, oftentimes that's because they can't afford to. So there are people who would choose to live in the city and not have to commute as far, except they can't afford to. But they do fall within this non-resident population. When we talk about streets and sidewalks, we're not just particularly talking about how they wear out the sidewalks. What we're talking about is, they have the use of the sidewalks that are paid by the taxpayers to be able to travel on, to be able to walk on. And this is not abnormal for many other cities, it's just that we have a larger amount of people who use them. So they do use fire services when they have accidents, when there's emergencies that happen, they're able to use the greenways openly, provide for festivals and events, and we do have an extensive downtown cleaning sidewalk program. So if you look on the other side of property owners, and those are the folks who are paying property taxes, you see that there is neighborhood policing and brush collection that may, that is a little bit more of a service that they receive within the city limits. So then the question becomes, who pays for their, for these services? And I think this is the struggle this community is having at this point in time with being, what they're, what the community is labeling as tourism, when it's not just tourism, it's also an increase in the daytime population that occurs. But what you're looking at is you have this influx and infill of non-resident population that we're serving during the day, but the bulk of, of the cost of those services are being paid for by the property taxpayers. We were just in a finance committee meeting, talking about fire services and the calls for services, and, you know, a lot of those services that we're hearing are, on accidents particularly, are not necessarily people who live in the city. So what are some possible solutions? So we try to acknowledge that, that appears to be what the dilemma that we're facing, is this imbalance of who gets services versus who pays for services. So we took a really broad approach to saying, what are some of the other cities doing, not just in North Carolina, but in some other places? And we didn't limit our thinking to just things that are allowed in North Carolina, we kind of opened it up. So these are some things that no city in North Carolina are currently allowed to do. A city-only sales tax is not permitted at this time in any city in North Carolina. Some communities, and in fact, when we attended a CBO meeting, there was a question about a tax for a second home, that's-
A differential rate for a second home.
Right, and that's currently not allowed in any city in North Carolina, or a city income tax. And there are some cities up north that have a special income tax that allow for this. We also looked, you know, at this point in time, I want to pause, because a lot of, a lot of folks ask this question. They, a lot of people say, "What about the room tax?" And so I'm going to talk about that in a little bit, but I think it's worth spending a little bit of time at this point to give a little bit of history about the Tourism Development Authority. It was established in 1983 at 2%. You can see for yourself the increase in, in the rates that have happened over the years. Currently, 3/4% of the money is used for marketing and/or other operational costs. 1/4 is used for Tourism Product Development Fund. In 2015, that money was limited to going to nonprofits and/or government. So there has been a higher level of working with local governments to be able to fund projects within that pot of money. So allowed property taxes, and I specifically had a question from Councilman Kapoor about, you know, what could the city do within the range of opportunities? All three of these are currently permitted within the city without any special legislation from the county and/or the state. The first one is a Business Improvement District. That was talked about probably six or seven years ago. Those are allowed in areas where we have a municipal service district, and are specifically set up to be able to address business areas, and the needs that businesses and more dense areas have. We also have the ability to do a special assessment. We talked about this in finance as well. A special assessment is when you have a neighborhood that wants an additional service, such as a sidewalk, or a storm drain line, or curb and gutter, and it may not rise to the highest priority that the city has. There are, we do have the ability within North Carolina to assess property owners on their tax bill, so that they actually cover the cost of that themselves. The city up-fronts the money, and then we're able to collect any money that we pay in administrative fees back over a seven-to-10-year period, it's put on their deed, and paid for back on their tax bill. And then, of course, the one we've talked about before, which is, has been the one that has been most available, is a property tax increase. We, with the, the efforts of our Equity and Inclusion Office, we are always looking at how these taxes or possibilities could potentially impact through an affordability lens. When we look at a bid, the bid as a, as an option, it would tax just property owners. So when we go back to that screen of who do we tax, so therefore, the areas within that would be the ones receiving it. However, we know at the same time, these typically, these property taxes are passed down to renters of small businesses and/or workers within that, in order to recoup that money. So it isn't, while we look at initially, it's charged to the property owners, it typically trickles down to the other folks within those areas, and are passed down to consumers and renters. So possible solutions. We are, we are coming to you today with specifically, we'll have some recommendations, but we are specifically coming to you to talk about two specific options. Currently, we are allowed by state legislature to ask Buncombe County to provide a referendum, to put a referendum on the ballot for a quarter cent sales tax for transit-related operations. This tax would be applicable to all purchases made in Buncombe County. So anybody coming into Buncombe County would get it. The city would receive revenue from both resident and non-resident population, so when we go back to that balance beam, we, it would be to both sides. Sales tax increases disproportionately impact low-income households, because the cost to meet basic needs are typically a larger percent of their overall budget. So even if they're paying less at prepared food, excuse me, for sales tax, it typically makes up a large percentage of their budget. And I, and I would be careful in how I say this, the benefit would be that the money that we would receive would go toward people who have barriers to transportation. So the state statute says that all of the money collected for this has to go into transportation, and it is, it is unlike some of the other types of sales taxes that you may have seen in the past in Buncombe County, in that the money is required by state law to go into transit and transit-related operations. And I'll show you that statute number in just a second.
And it, and it has to enhance the service authority providing, cannot displace current spending.
Yes, the state law specifically can't, says it can't, you cannot supplant anything that you're currently spending.
And Kathy, I would, it is, that statement is absolutely true, that it would benefit people with transportation barriers. Building out the transit system, for instance, that is represented by the Transit Master Plan, would also benefit a lot of people who don't have transportation barriers, which, you know, in the cities that have really successful transit systems, that's, that's who you're serving. You're serving both of those populations. So it's, I just, I just want to be clear that this, this would be, this would benefit the broader community as well, including, including importantly, county residents, as the Transit Master Plan that we adopted contemplates expanding the city service out into the county, so.
So that is an excellent point. I think, I think with this statement, it is just acknowledging that while this may have an impact on households with lower income, it also provides a great benefit for folks with, with, that have limitations to transportation.
So Kathy, just to close the loop on the question I had had before, and I appreciate you, you kind of listing some of these, you know, the question I essentially asked was, you know, is there anything that we can kind of do on our own right now, similar to the, the quarter cent sales tax? And so, so you've listed those three, the bids, the special assessments, the property tax increase, you've got the voter referendum for the sales tax. Are there, are there any other ones that you're aware of, that would either, that either we could do via vote, or that we could do via voter referendum that you're aware of?
The only other ones that you can are things for service. So if you wanted to go up on solid waste service, you have that ability.
To fees, basically, okay, okay. But there's not, there's not like a new type of revenue stream that, that we, that we know of that we can do right now?
No.
Okay.
Well, and Vijay, I just want to put a point on the transit tax. We don't get to do that. The county commission has to vote to put it on the ballot. We can ask them to do that, but they can say no. And then, right now, under current state law, we're, that's, that's the end of the conversation, so they don't have to do it just because we ask.
Right, and so are there, are there any other taxes that you're aware of, that are similar to this, where, where it's either the county could, could potentially, what I'm, I'm not advocating for that, I'm just, I'm just sort of trying to get the universe that's out there.
Are you saying where there's already enabling legislation?
Exactly.
Like, we wouldn't have to go to the legislature to try to do it.
That's exactly right, that's exactly right.
And no, nothing that isn't service-related, that isn't stormwater fees, or something that, parking fees. The only other things that we have options for is fees. We have no other ability to do any kinds of taxes.
Okay, thank you.
So again, as Julie mentioned, this is a voter referendum, it has to be approved by Buncombe County. The process for doing that, that I'll get to in a timeline in a little bit, is similar to what Council took up action for the bond. So there has to be three motions from county commissioners, it has to be put on the ballot. Interestingly, on this one, the state legislation specifically says what the wording has to be on the ballot. So it's very different than trying to work through what the wording would be. So-
And Kathy, I'm sorry, the, is the 1 quarter cent defined also, or is it just-
It is.
Okay, just checking.
It is. So just to clarify, the question was, does it, is it a quarter cent, or could you do a half a cent, or an eighth of a cent? It's defined as a fourth of a, of a cent within the statutes.
Okay.
The other precedent that there is in North Carolina is for a prepared food and beverage tax. That's also known as a meals tax. So that applies to any food that is prepared, and it could be in a deli of a, of a grocery store. And again, with an equity lens, we want to point out that it would disproportionately impact households with lower incomes, because larger percentages of their budgets are used for food, and for ready-to-eat items. The alternate raising property taxes would likely impact Asheville's affordability, and would be passed down to consumers and renters as well. And with these, you're going to see us take a look at everything we present to you in terms of an equity lens, so that you have the fair ability to be able to evaluate it based on the impact to some of our more marginalized community. And we are offering up that there is a potential of strengthening our food security with some of the nonprofits that we currently have great relationships with, so that we're able to increase our ability to provide more food security to folks in this situation. What do other cities do? So of course, we're not alone. We've tried to target cities that are similar in size in order to benchmark, and that have an increasing daytime population similar to Asheville. So Miami Beach, I want to point out on every slide that you're going to see, on the right-hand side of the vertical bar, every bit of that money goes directly to cities, so it isn't passed through to any other agency. So Miami Beach has a population of 91,000, they have 8.6 visitors a year, with a daytime population increase that's not as large as Asheville. And they, the City of Miami Beach gets a 2% food and beverage tax, and a 4% room tax.
So when you show us these taxes up here, these are actually revenues going directly to the city, not to a separate authority like-
Exactly. Every one of the ones that you see in these examples, the money goes directly to the cities. Duluth, Minnesota, population 86,000, 3.5 million visitors, they have a 1% city sales tax. Again, I would say that's not currently allowed or permitted in North Carolina. A 2.25% meals or food and beverage tax, and a 3% to 5.5% lodging tax. City of Greenville, South Carolina, which is just about an hour south of us, population 68,000, 5 million visitors a year, they have a huge daytime population, which would be most compared to ours, in terms of the increase in population. They receive directly a 3% municipal accommodations tax, and a 2% meals tax.
Is the municipal accommodation, is that a room tax?
Yes.
Is that what we would call a room tax?
Oh, okay.
Does municipal accommodation, like, like the city runs the hotel?
I know, or I was like, what, what does that mean?
So Charleston, that's what they call theirs, so in, in the information that we're prepared to provide, we also cite all the references for these locations. Charleston, South Carolina, you can see- Charleston, South Carolina, you can see the information there and just what you're seeing is the additional revenues. Again, all of these revenues come directly to the municipalities.
When you see the, the 50 cents, did you, the ticket fee?
What ticket for what?
So if you buy a ticket, for example, it would be like if you buy a ticket for an event, or if you buy a ticket for a venue, 50 cents would go to the city for, for, if it's within the city limits.
We don't have anything like that in North Carolina that I'm aware of.
Not aware of anything in North Carolina that allows for this. So the Balancing Act, so this is what, this is what we call a balancing act, is how do we, how do we balance this out so that the people who are receiving the service are the people who are paying for the service? So the ability to be able to add a sales tax for transit would also apply to the, the property owners as well as the non-resident population. The prepared food and beverage tax would also apply to both property owners and non-residential. The hotel tax is only, typically only comes from a non-residential population. So we believe that a lot of the tension around tourism or the, the infill during daytime population is from this imbalance. And if we could reach this balance, then we wouldn't have the tension in our community. Some of us this morning spent the morning with the reconnect community talking about how we have hard conversations and how we really get to the heart of the matter when we're talking about things that are causing trouble and causing issues. I would say from the folks that we talked to, a lot of the issues around hotels, a lot of the issues around tourism are from, from the community or just from the fact that people are feeling like they're, they're not paying for their equal share within the community. And so that's kind of the hard conversation to have around that. So a consideration of a path forward. This is where we lay out, we're getting into laying out these options. Hotel tax, what we're proposing is aligning resources to impact. As you know, we have received huge benefits from our tourism community. If you were a small business downtown, it would be, you would say that this is vital to your success. We know downtown would not be what it is without our tourism economy. So we are not in any way, from a staff perspective, perspective labeling this as a negative thing because our community would not be what it is. Additionally, the city has received significant amount of funding, funding from the tourism product development funding. The city has received $22 million, and you can see the list of projects. This is just a list of the significant projects that we've received. We've also received monies, additional funding. The tourism economy is specifically from the TDA. Employees over 18,000 people within our community, and there's a $2 billion spending in our community as a result of tourism. A question that came up during some conversations with council members is the other communities in North Carolina that receive these monies directly, receive them for different reasons. But within each of those, we found these six, these five common themes of things that other communities receive, that receive this money are allowed to spend it on. So there are very few communities that get the hotel tax that are not told by the General Assembly, you have to spend it on this. They typically aren't just handed the money and said, put it in your operating budget and buy whatever you want with it. With the biggest one being destination, destination promotion. Next, tourism-related expenditures, funding for tourism-related capital projects. You would see that Charlotte received money to renovate the Panther Stadium as a result of this. A lot of the monies along the beach that go directly to, directly to cities are for beach renourishment and specifically have to be spent on those things. The less of, the fifth one is the less that we see happen more frequently, which is basically how you can have the money and put it wherever you want to. But that is very infrequent that that is allowed by this day. So TPDF funding, I would just remind everybody again of what that stands for, Tourism Product Development Funding, which is three, four, one-fourth of the amount of money that's received in the hotel tax. It's estimated to be about $5 million a year. We are currently working with the Tourism Development Authority, Explore Asheville, to develop a large program that would fund a 10, 10-year program at $50 million that would address downtown sidewalk improvements, downtown placemaking improvements, and renovations to the Thomas Wolfe Auditorium. And we, we, so at this point in time, we are not proposing an, an increase to the hotel tax to go to the city. What we are hoping is that through working through, through the staff and through the process that's currently laid out, that we would be able to fund a lot of these improvements within, within our city. The action needed, so as we, you're going to see a pattern as we move through this. We will be working with the staff of the Tourism Development Authority through March of 2019 to fully develop the program that would come before council and as well as the Tourism Development Board to be able to propose a very large-scale project that would be multi-year in funding improvements. So the next one that, that we're going to talk about is this quarter cent sales tax for transit. Again, it's countywide. A fourth of a cent sales tax countywide would be about $12 million a year estimated. The money would be used for countywide transit-related. And as, as council member Mayfield mentioned earlier, it would give us the opportunity to expand transit into the county and provide option for people to be able to use services commuting in from the county. We would need to partner with the county to be able to make this happen. The implementation, it would, it would allow us to implement the master plan that you all approved earlier this year. And again, it would be able to expand services into the county. I want to point out that the state statute that allows us to do this is Article 43 105-56. I had some questions earlier about the amount of that. It specifically speaks to this, the, the county's ability to enact this. It must be approved as a referendum. I want to also point out that the system may include one or more of the following structures, improvements, buildings, equipment, vehicle parking, or passenger transit facilities. So there, there, those are the pieces of what can be, that money can be spent on. It isn't simply just buying buses, as well as interconnecting bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. So there's a large number of options. However, it cannot be used or spent on other items that aren't specifically called out within this statute. And it, as we said earlier, it cannot supplant any money that's currently going into the system. There are four counties in North Carolina that currently have a quarter cent sales tax. And these are the counties, and these are the years that they established these. So this is an action plan for how we would propose to move forward. We would need to work with the county to update the transit plan. And in doing so, it would be looking at other options of providing transit into the county as well as providing others, other amenities that are allowed within the statute. It would require that we partner heavily with the county to do this. We cannot and would not have an option of doing this without the county being fully on board. So there would be a lot of discussions with the county about how they would want to see that happen and a lot of working with the city in doing that. The county, we would propose that the county would take all the, the action that that board would need to take during the spring and summer of 2020. And then we would propose, if council approves, to move this item forward in the fall 2020, on the, in the fall election as a referendum. Any questions about that one? So now we move to prepared food and beverage tax. We won't act like this is easy either. There have not been a lot of communities who've been able to do that, and we certainly know that we would not be able to do it without having significant partnership with our community, with our business community, and with our community as a whole. I will point out that there is only one other city that I have seen that has not gone directly to the state to ask for the additional 1%. What we would propose is that we go to the state and ask them to allow us to hold a referendum, to let the voters decide on what they want. So that's a little nuance that we've seen in a lot of other ones. So this is one that would require action from the General Assembly. The benefits, I do also want to point out that we have a significant, great partnership with a lot of our restaurants within our community. I have statistics just for the Asheville Independent Restaurants, but I'm sure there's ones that are not partners there that contribute significantly to our community. 91% of all Air members contribute to local nonprofits. The average value of donations from Air members was about $20,000 in 2017. This represents about 2.14 million of charitable contributions that these restaurants have made. They employ over five, almost 6,000 people, and I think it's interesting to look at the fact that their wages of non-tipped employees is $13.75. For tipped employees is, is about $19.50. And they are significant partners with the city of Asheville. So a 1% food and beverage tax in the city only would generate around $5 million. And again, we want to point out that local restaurants contribute significantly to our economy. This would allow for increased cleanliness in business districts that have a lot of restaurants. It could increase public safety, increase sidewalk maintenance in these areas, and additionally help contribute to improvements to the Thomas Wolfe Auditorium, for example. The cities that have successfully done this in different areas have adopted kind of logos. What we have heard from a lot of folks is that they wouldn't necessarily be opposed to something as long as the money went into something that they could see a benefit from. So communities that we studied have developed these clean and safe programs so that there is, the money that's being spent is being spent to improve the safety and the cleanliness of the city. So these are the counties, four counties that have adopted a meals tax or have been allowed to have a meals tax. The only town in North Carolina is the town of Hillsborough.
And, and of these, I think only one of them was by referendum, right? The rest were just legislation?
All of these were, none of these were by referendum. The referendum one did not move from the, it was not approved from the house.
One of them was resulted in a vote.
It was submitted. And what I would point out with this, with all of our research, without our local community supporting us, I don't think there's any option, any question as to whether or not we would be approved at the state level for this. So I think as an action step, it's really working with our local partners to be able to understand and move forward and evaluate what their needs are. So the action needed is to work with local businesses to understand the impact of needs, direct legal staff to, to tell our lobbyists that we need to start talking to people in the General Assembly, make the request to the General Assembly. One of the unique things is the collection process. When cities do this only, there is a uniqueness around the collection because typically all these taxes are remitted to the state. When it comes to meal taxes, the other places that have it, the money is remitted directly to either the county or the city. So the process of working with restaurants and those providers to set up processes so that they can remit it directly to the city is something that we have to acknowledge would be an additional burden on them. And so the city would need to work closely to help either offset the cost associated with that, with part of this revenue, or to understand what it would take to do that. And then again, move to a referendum in the fall of 2020. Again, what I would say is some of the tension the community feels around tourism, around, around the increased population, I think could be addressed through these measures. So next steps, and then I'm going to be quiet. The next steps, we want to reassure you that staff is always looking and exploring other revenue options. Just like a portfolio that anybody would have for anything that they're working on, we know that we are vulnerable because we are so limited in our revenue streams. Having only the ability to have fees and charges and, and sales and property taxes limits us and makes us vulnerable to any economic times that happen. So we constantly evaluate that. We, the, the next action, we would be looking for direction from the city man, to the city manager would be to update the transit master plan in conjunction with the county to identify how improvements could be made into the county to be able to meet the needs of, of the community as a whole. And then the third bullet is direct to city manager to engage, engage the community on these alternatives. And that would be meeting with local partners like the Asheville Independent Restaurants, the Asheville Area Chamber of Commerce, Council of Independent Business Owners, Asheville Lodging Association, Asheville Bed and Breakfast Association, and kind of within that timeframe to sit down and have conversations and then develop and implement a plan for full community engagement. So this is the direction we're looking from, for, from council today. And at this point in time, that's, that's the end of my lengthy presentation.
Kathy, just one quick question on the, on this, the other question that I asked for you guys was, was asking whether there were other types of special, you know, enabling legislation that other cities in North Carolina had that had other revenue options? And I realize you guys may not have had time to do that between now and then. Did you guys look and not find any, or have you just not had the opportunity to do that yet?
We have looked, and we have not found any additional revenue options that are available to other communities above and beyond this. There, there may be, and you know, the question of some of these, like a bid, for example, you, you don't generate as much revenue. So there are some very small ones that just don't generate very much revenue at all and don't really address the imbalance that we have with services and who pays. So, so the, we did evaluate and look at what other cities have done within North Carolina, and, and these are the options available to us.
Okay, thank you.
Kathy, you spoke a little bit about a strategy to help mitigate the impact that this will have on low-income communities. I wanted to hear a little bit more about the strategy that you suggested because in my opinion, the food security option that you gave, well, let me go here. When we're talking about fast food or prepared foods for low-income communities or the working poor, I don't think it really has to do much with food security as it has to do with convenience because people are working all the time and they don't have time to prepare their food. So I just wanted to know if, just kind of unpack that strategy for me and then give me some more information about other strategies you may have come up with.
Well, I think that, I think it's an opportunity for us to engage with folks who are providing for this service, to see how that can be made easier. I mean, some of the things that just come off the, you know, the top of my head is that a lot of folks nowadays who can, who can afford are getting these boxes of food delivered to their home that they can prepare and cook. Those are quite expensive. If we work through some of our local nonprofits, is it possible to have some of those boxes delivered to people's homes so that it makes it easier for them to prepare food at home? I don't, I don't know what we could do. I, I think there is a significant amount of revenue that could be put aside to working with folks who do this all the time. I think the answers to these questions really lie in, in community and getting with folks and saying, what would make it easier for you to be able to, and offer healthier options? But if there were lower-cost options of having food delivered to homes in boxes that have healthy, healthy food, I, I don't know what all of the different options are. We don't have the answers. But what we would ask you to do is that we would start having those conversations so people could open it up and say, what are some of the things that look different? That's just one off the top of my head that I know a lot of folks do, but those are very expensive services.
Because I'm just thinking about the comment that was made, it would impact low-income communities, but then the benefit on the other, other end would be their access to transit options.
Yeah.
But I'm just thinking about any increase in a person's daily income, their daily expenses might displace them from the city and they might not be able to benefit.
And so I, I think we bring that forward through an equity lens to say, this is what we would try to do, but you know, we're going to stand before you and be honest with you about the negative impacts of anything that you do. What we would do is try to have those conversations, but we don't want to, we don't want to sugarcoat it and make you think that, that those impacts aren't real. But we would try to work with community partners to come up with options of being able to offset that.
Well, and, and I think if we were to give direction to staff to, to further explore this, one of the first steps would be to try to get some good numbers to this, one of the first steps would be to try to get some good numbers to see what kind of impacts we're really talking about. I mean, we can, we can kind of guess through our anecdotal experience what it might be, but I always seem surprised by what the data actually shows. So, I mean, I think we'd want to look at that and try to figure out what kind of impact would that mean on your average family of four, or, you know, what, how does that really translate? And, because it, it does include all prepared foods. So, when you think of fine dining all the way to McDonald's or whatever, or the deli prepared foods at Ingles or something like that. So, we, you know, we'd need to look at that. And then, being a quarter cent or a 1% too, just sort of in real time, what is that amount of money annually? You know, what does that really look like for a family?
Yeah, and so, it's very interesting that the deep research that we've done is very telling in that of the amount of money that, that you would receive in, in this sales tax, or excuse me, food and beverage tax, about half of it would come from tourism. So, you would look at a significant amount of that coming from people who are eating all their meals for the most part when they're here. Through the equity lens, though, even if you're only paying a smaller amount of those funds, it's a bigger part of your take-home pay. So, the impact is significant even if the amount of revenue that we generate is, is much different. And so, we're trying to acknowledge those things as we walk, as we walk through this carefully. We know that it does change the balance from the money that we bring in, but how it affects folks' ability to pay is what we're also trying to evaluate as well.
Well, and for that matter, the quarter cent sales tax concept as well, it's, it's a smaller tax, but it's spread out overall trans, all sales tax transactions countywide. So, it brings in quite a bit more revenue where the individual impact, it'd be interesting to see how it compares. You know, if you're, if you're dealing with only something that's a quarter cent, but it's going to apply to, well, it won't apply to foods, food, like grocery food, but it would apply to if you're buying clothing or, you know, other transactions that are subject to the full sales tax. So, to try to, to explore this. I mean, we're, we don't have a scalpel to try to tax visitors. We're limited in our tools. So, we're trying to find the tools that best reapportion the tax burden for folks living and visiting in Asheville.
And after our conversations, this is really our first cut at coming to you with what other cities do and the amount of revenue. We're, we're very open once we have conversations with our partners, with our community, with other folks who do a lot of equity work in the community. This could change somewhat. We want to create, we don't want just, just a new path, we want a better path.
Kathy, has, I don't know if the legislation allows this, but does the legislation around food and beverage tax allow just a beverage tax, for instance, or even just an alcoholic beverage tax? Might be, it just...
Kathy, do you know the answer to that? I don't, I don't, I don't know that there is. I, I kept receipts, I was out of town for Thanksgiving and in a tourist place, and I kept receipts from every place I ate to see, to try to figure it out. And, I mean, on, on prepared food, it was 11%.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm wondering, from, from an equity, from an equity perspective, splitting out the food and not taxing food, but maybe taxing just beverages and maybe not just a 1%, but actually more than that. I'm just wondering if you could make up the revenue, if, if the tax is higher, if you could make up the revenue that you would lose from not including food.
We could look at that.
Yeah.
I don't know of any city in North Carolina that does, but we're happy to look at that.
But New York City does tax sodas.
Right, they do tax sodas. I'm not, right, and I guess...
I said that's not where you're headed.
No, no, that's not where I'm headed. I mean, it's, it's really, I mean, it would really be, we, we have a lot of people who come here to drink beer, and sorry to all of our brewery friends, but that is, that is what happens. The, the other thing, and I've, I've had conversations with some of you about this, in addition to this list, which I think is right, so investigating whether we could split out, split apart food and beverage tax. The other thing I would like for us to also investigate is the, on a parallel track, the possibility of legislation that would authorize the city alone to do a transit tax. And, and I know there's not necessarily unanimous support for that up here, but I still have real questions about whether the county is, the county is ready to put a referendum on the ballot and whether county voters are whether to, are ready to approve another referendum. So, we've, we've done some initial investigation into that. It is, it is theoretically possible there are logistical issues that are, that Esther thinks are, are not overcomeable, but I am, I am, I am not willing to concede that yet. So, I just, if we can, if we can add that to the list of next steps, that'd be great.
So, Kathy, so staff's going to look for some direction on this, and I don't think we're talking about here today whether we're saying, "Oh, yeah, we want to go ahead and move forward with these ideas." Obviously, each of these ideas isn't even ours unilaterally to decide upon, but I think we just, we need to give staff an indication whether or not we'd like to advance this conversation, do some more research, and take a look at each of these options more in depth to sort of weigh them, and also begin that process of reaching out to the community and the stakeholders that are going to be, need to be at the table as a part of this conversation. And ultimately, I mean, all of these arrive at the voter's doorstep to, to consider if we were to successfully advance them. So, is there, is there any, I don't know, I don't know that we necessarily need a vote, but we do need to have some indication that we're interested in furthering the conversation.
I'm interested in moving the conversation forward. I think at this point in time, it's, it's worth mentioning that, you know, there are no clear pathways forward considering that this is not something, again, that we can unilaterally do. And I would welcome county commissioners to have a conversation as well as constituents be involved with council members and county commissioners on what they think. But it's definitely worth moving the ball forward and with the sobering, understanding that there is no clear pathway forward right now, but we will see what, what comes of it.
Regarding the, the food and beverage tax, I mean, is, would the concept be that, that should it be put in a referendum, we will also kind of indicate how those monies would be used?
So, the way I've seen it done is the legislation, we're going to have to have enabling legislation, and the legislation is where you give the description of the use of the funds. And then, that, and then, you know, there's two ways to do it. One is just to do legislation if the legislature will work with you. And the other is to do the legislation followed by a vote. But the legislation is what would include the description of the confines of the funds.
Right, and so, the question where I was getting at, and let me just say, I'm supportive of having us, having us take a look at this. I think the question on the transit stuff, part of my concern is just trying to make sure we, in the event that we, it would be successful, that we would actually be able to implement and execute to be able to use that. Because again, this, this year, we've had some difficulty with, with kind of operating the transit system on the, on the, the funding we currently have. But regardless, I mean, I think it's still something we should, I don't think it should stop us from, from looking at this. On the, on the, the prepared food and beverage tax, you know, there's a slide in here where it talks about what we could provide. I mean, I think there, I think that's going to be a, a discussion that we need to have in council as well as to how that money may be used. I mean, if, if part of the impetus for this is to say that we think that, that property owners are bearing too much of the burden of providing the services, which, which I think is true, I mean, if you look at this, we are heavily dependent on the property tax. You know, the question in my mind is, well, could some of this food and beverage tax actually supplant some of the property taxes that folks are paying so that it's not necessarily additional monies that we're, we're spending in the future, but perhaps some ability to have it, to not have, to have the property tax either increase or perhaps to, to, to transfer some of that, some of that property tax out. So, I think those are discussions that we're going to need to have. I figure I would, I might as well mention that now since we're, since we're going through this work session, but I, I am supportive of having us, you know, have these conversations and take a look at it forward as well.
Kathy, I want to piggyback off of what Councilwoman Mayfield said, particularly about the beverage tax, to be able to specifically look and see if there is possibility for the specific tax on alcoholic beverages, not, and, and take away the food part, but can we, do we have that ability to do that? So, that is something that I have a particular interest in as well as Council Mayfield, Councilwoman Mayfield.
So, I think if we give staff the indication that we like to move forward with exploring all those, and we'll pack in all these questions of details and information we're going to want to know before we advance any of these ideas. So, do I hear, is everyone okay with at least taking the next step of kind of doing a deeper dive on looking at each one of these options and pros and cons and how they really will work, the details?
Thank you, Jeff.
Is that all right? I see, yep, we have a consensus up here. Okay, that is the only presentation. Are there any other questions of staff, comments before, we'll take a break before council starts at 5:00? Anything else? All right, thank you very much for putting that together.